Good evening. Are we done? Alright, welcome you to this month's regular scheduled school board meeting and please note that all board members are to student members and superintendent present. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and as we begin each session, would you join me for a moment of silence, please? Thank you so much, Greg. We'll stand with you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll make you sit. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I want a motion to adopt the agenda.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor, let me know by putting your hand. All board members were in favor, the agenda is adopted. Item two is communications and one of our favorite parts of any board meeting is recognition. So if you'd like to get us started, sir.
I'll be glad to. So our first recognition tonight is the Garrett County Schools Danville Office Equipment Staff Member of the Month. And our staff member of the month this month is Kelsey Preston from Lancaster Elementary School. Ms. Preston is an exceptional team member who excels in working with students in our highly structured program. She's patient, kind, and understanding to our students who need extra support and behavior management. Mrs. Preston ensures our students maintain high expectations while also nurturing their social and emotional needs. And we're so happy to have Ms. Preston as part of our team. Congratulations, Ms. Preston. Our next recognition is the Garrett County Schools Whittaker Bank Teacher of the Month, and this month it's Kristy Markham from Lancaster Elementary School. Mrs. Markham serves as our special education teacher for primary students and excels at building meaningful connections. She utilizes personalized strategies tailored to each student's need to foster a supportive learning environment. She also works closely with parents, offering consistent communication and guidance. Her calm and patient approach ensures all students are in a classroom where they thrive, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. We're so thankful to have Ms. Markham on the LES and she's a team. Congratulations. Next is the Garrett County Schools Farmer National Bank Students of the Month. First from CDR is Bo Abey, a third grader. Bo's a third grade student who exemplifies our Paws Expectations daily. So Paws, P-A-W-S. P, Prepared. Bo arrives each day ready to learn and assist his fellow students. A, Attitude. Bo encourages students to achieve their best. W, Works Hard. Bo gives his best effort daily on assignments, responsibilities, and participation. And S, Shows Respect. Bo includes others in activities, works to keep the classroom neat and orderly, and follows classroom expectations. He also enjoys playing football and drawing, and I hear he's also a piano player. Wow. So congratulations, Bo. Next from LES is Lachey Barrow. Lachey, the kindergarten student. And Mrs. Kellerman says that she is a student that exemplifies what a true learner should look like by demonstrating all five of our Leopard Expectations. She helps her friends and teachers without being asked, shows patience when given a hard task, and is a great friend. She's a leader in the classroom and is destined for great things here at LES and beyond. It was a no-brainer to pick her as our Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Come on.
Next for Paintlick is Natalie Robertson. Natalie is a fifth grade student at Paintlick, and she's an enthusiastic learner, she's a hard worker, and she's committed to helping others. Natalie has a positive attitude and participates in class discussions. She also supports her peers and excels both in and out of the classroom, and she's a joy to have in our classroom. Congratulations, Natalie. From Garrett Middle School is Eli Durbin. Eli's a sixth grader, and he exemplifies the pride expectations from the middle school. P is Perseverance. He completes all assignments and turns in everything on time. R, Respect. He is very mannerly to his teachers and peers. I, Involvement. He is willing to help out when needed and participates actively within his classes. D, Dedication. He is always on time to class with all materials ready. And E, Excellence. He's an excellent student role model and represents GMS and a positive man. Congratulations, Eli. And from Garrett County High School, Reagan Powell. Reagan is a senior and is a model student. She's a very dedicated lady lion. She works hard academically and on the sports field. Reagan leads our school and is an example of the Lion's Expectation. Leadership, integrity, ownership, no excuses, and self-control. Reagan will have completed 24 dual-credit hours, is career-ready in business and the FACS pathways, and lettered in basketball and tennis. We'd like to thank Reagan for her excellence in GCA tennis. Congratulations.
Happy birthday, Reagan.
I'll have a birthday, Reagan.
Alright, thank you. I hope you all can see why this is so important. But next is South Bay's Decision Making Minutes, and I hope my colleagues have had an opportunity to look over those. Item C is Audience Comments. Do we have any?
No, sir.
No audience comments? Board member comments is next. Before my other board members share anything that's on their heart, they're like, "I'd like, as the chairman of the Board of Education, to thank all our students from the elementary all the way up to the top end for all the hard work that was accomplished in making the Central Region KSPA meeting in the high schools successful as it was. We couldn't have done it without you all, and I thank you, and I'm so proud of everyone." Thank you very much. Alright, any board member? Okay, if not, item E is Superintendent, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So first up tonight, information coming from me will be our Lancaster Elementary School update. Ms. Milton, we'll put the floor over to you.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming to Lancaster Elementary tonight. The last time you all were here was in December of last year, so a lot has happened in nine months. And I just wanted to take my time and just talk about some of our initiatives that we have going on at Lancaster Elementary. First off, we've got a big push for school culture here. And we want to strengthen our sense of community by coming together as a school each nine weeks. And we also want to celebrate our students. You can see there at the top, we had a glow party for our kids who participated in KSA and made their best efforts. And we also started an archery team. Well, we're in the process of starting an archery team. We're the only school that didn't have an archery team, and we want to make sure our students have that opportunity as well, so that is in the works. And going along with school culture, we're talking about Leopard Expectations, which are be a learner, be a listener, be responsible, be safe, and be respectful. We took those expectations and applied them to every area in our building. We also laid out what each expectation would be, would need, in each area, so students know exactly what's expected of them every day all across the school. We talk about those in our morning announcements and just to reiterate what our students need to do during the day for behavior expectations. Leo the Leopard, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Eisen also instituted our Leo the Leopard Award, so anybody that is going above and beyond these expectations, we make sure we give them a shout-out on Facebook, and they receive the Leo Leopard Award. Collaboration. Ms. Eisen also formed a leadership team. These students are fourth and fifth graders at LES, and they are instrumental in helping make decisions for our school, and they're also helpers in our building. We're also able to partner with the Lancaster Baptist Church for a mentoring program for our students who need some extra support, so we really appreciate them. We were able to have Representative David Mead and Senator Donald Douglas come to visit our school. We're very appreciative of them to come in and see actual students when they're making legislation for those kids. And right along with school culture still, we want to give staff spotlights. We've got a great certified and classified staff here at Lancaster Elementary, so we want to make sure everybody feels appreciated. And we also have a school staff website that we give shout-outs for great instructional strategies that we see. We also have a very active parent-teacher organization, and that was new last year. They are instrumental in helping build our school culture. We've got night donuts for grownups, they're fundraising to make sure kids have opportunities for testing, for rewards, and to help with our facilities. Right now, they're looking at putting new benches on our playground, so we're very appreciative of them. And then our most important is, of course, our instruction. The graphic at the top was our I-Ready scores at the end of last year. I don't know if you can see it very well, but most of our students have moved into the high-performance, high-growth quadrant for math. And most of our students were in the high-growth area with a few in high-performance for reading, but we are trending that way, and we want to make sure we keep going that way. The bottom two graphics are our I-Ready scores from the beginning of this year, and as you can see from the green, that we are ready for tier-one instruction, most of our students. So that is awesome to see, so that means we can start the year off right and move forwards. And we also want to highlight our students who are doing well in the classroom with a proficient or distinguished grade level assessment, so we give them a shout-out and get their picture and make sure they're celebrated, too. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. The next report tonight will be a new one for us, one that we're excited to have, and that is our student members' update, so we will turn it over to our students.
Okay, so yeah, we just wanted to come up here and highlight something about the high school each month, and this month we want to highlight the clubs. We've been able to be really, really active with our clubs. I'm just going to highlight a couple for you guys. I want to start off with Family Career Community Leaders of America. This is SCCLA. SCCLA is really excited to start the year. We have a few things coming up, such as the Fall Regional Meeting, and we also are partnering with FBLA to make our club t-shirts. We are also getting started on our Krispy Kreme donut fundraiser.
This year they're going to have their national convention with that mum fundraiser, and they're also going to the North Carolina Livestock Show in Eroge. We're very excited for this year and our club looks forward.
Next, we want to talk about Student Council. Student Council has already had a chance to get their club started. Two officers actually just went to Western Kentucky University for the High School Leadership Conference. We also have our first executive director, Black Elkhorn Director, is a partner of Lancaster Elementary and also for Lancaster Elementary, and I think we're still waiting to hear back from the other schools.
We also have our Jared NC Club. They're going to be putting up flags at Camp Nelson for Adventure Day, and they're starting their raiders. They'll compete in marksmanship and...
Next, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. FBLA is not just about teaching students about business, but it's also about getting the students ready for their future and how they can be leaders. FBLA is super excited for all the fun activities coming up, such as our Fall Regional Meeting, and we also have fundraising events. I think we're still kind of making that, we don't know yet.
We have the band, the band's starting their competitions. We're very excited for the months ahead of us. Ride the weight. Oh yeah, we have a ride the weight dress-up week, that's what we're going to dress up.
I think that's the ones that I want to touch on the most today, just because I think those have been the most active so far, but yeah, I guess that's all.
Thank you both for doing that, we appreciate that. It's good insight for all of us to remember what we do, why we do what we do here, and why this board is in this location. Next we have information from Operation Unite, and you should have a one-pager in front of you for that. Mr. Carl Varney is here to share some information tonight, so Mr. Varney, we turn it over to you.
I'll stand here, this is where you'd like me to sit. So my name is Carl Varney, and I work for an organization called Operation Unite. Unite was started in 2003 by Congressman Hal Rogers, when he saw that Eastern Kentucky was the epicenter for the opioid epidemic, and it was the painkiller capital of the world, so to speak. So he started the organization, he put a bunch of people in rooms, said we're not leaving until we come up with some sort of solution response to this, and Unite was born from that. It stands for unlawful narcotics investigation, treatment, and education. And so we believe it's a three-pronged approach to fighting the opioid epidemic. Now your sheriff, Sheriff Skeens, was one of our Unite detectives when Unite started. So because of that relationship, he wanted us to do some things here already. So a couple of years ago, we did a basketball camp, a free basketball camp with Kentucky Wildcat Jared Poulsen. We gave every kid a basketball, gave them all a t-shirt, gave away a couple of goals, we all ate hot dogs till we passed out, it was pregnant. But we wanted to do more, and so our new CEO, his attitude about what Operation Unites as far as our education component, especially the prevention side of it and the treatment side of it, is if it's good enough for the kids and for the community in Harlan, it's good enough for the kids and the community in Lancaster. And so we wanted to expand, and that's my new role for Operation Unite, I've been with Unite for 12 years, and so I'm the expansion coordinator. So I've been here developing some relationships to get some of the things that Unite does as part of it. Now the way we're funding this is through our opioid abatement settlement money. We applied for a grant, and so through that grant, we got the money to expand to some counties. Some of the things that we're going to do here, we want to start a coalition for this county, for Garrett County made up of Garrett Counties, to do things here in this community. One of the things that we really love are archery in the schools programs, and so our coalition, we're going to give it up to $15,000 this next year to fund things like Lancaster Elementary's archery in the schools program, you know, to be able to buy you some targets, to be able to provide some transportation for you all to go to tournaments and things like that. We just don't buy food, that's about the only thing. That coalition can also do different community events, we can support aftercare programs, but for the school systems, we just love any sort of programs, innovative programs that you all are doing, to be able to fund. We just want to build relationships with our kids, we want our kids to know that somebody cares about them enough to spend some time and resources into them. So we know that that's your all's belief as well, we just want to come alongside some of the things you're doing and bring some of the information that we have from what we've built over the last 21 years. And so that's part of it. We also have a whole bunch of prevention programming, which is what your one-pager's about, and all these programs are free, some of them meet some of the qualifications that have just come up in some of the legislation recently, the vaping component, some things like that, that's now become mandatory for you to fill, and sometimes has to cost you lots of money to get somebody to come in and teach that kind of curriculum, we do it for free. And so one of the programs that we're going to come to first, October the 29th and the 30th, and we'll make sure that all of you get a formal invite, we're going to have our mobile classroom, and we have this, you know, 40-foot trailer that has a Bose surround sound home theater built inside of it, and we're going to bring the kids on there for 10th graders and for 7th graders, and we do a program called Pathway to Addiction. And we're going to record that on that, share it with your family resource and youth service centers for their grants, and then we're going to just allow the kids to understand some of the knowledge that they need to know about what addiction is. Really, we're just going to tell them what they've seen it do in some of their own families is what it does every time, but we're going to give them some tools. And then in the gym, we have these go-karts, and we talk about a pair of driving them. And it's a lot of fun, but it's really educational, it's impactful, and so I really encourage you to come and sit on the trailer through one of our presentations, just so you understand the quality of the curriculum and the programs that we want to bring here. So October 29th, we're going to be at the high school, and October 30th, we're going to be with the middle school students, and so that's part of it. We also want to start a Unite club. It doesn't even have to be a new club, it could be, you know, piggybacking off of one of these clubs that you're already doing, but the... I would say that the mentality of the club, the purpose of the club, is to have kids that are going to be drug-free. There are some FFA clubs that we already have piggybacked off of, baby clubs and things like that, but we're going to give each of those clubs up to $1,000 to do programming throughout the year. It starts at 4th grade, so you can have a 4th and 5th grade club, or the middle school club, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and then the high school clubs, and we're going to give every one of those kids a t-shirt, and we just want them all to know that we're on the same team. And so everything that we do here, we just want them to know that we're in this thing together, and so I wish that I could tell you everything that we do, but I'm not going to build the clock and take up a whole lot more time, but we definitely want you all to be a part of it. And I wanted you all to be aware of what we're trying to do here in Garrett County, because it doesn't really work unless you all are on the team too. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to address them. Oh, I should tell you, all of the money that we're going to use starts October 1st. So we've got some of our key people in place. Callum is going to be a part of our coalition, and Ms. Katie is going to be a part of our coalition, and we're going to build that using the Health Department, which we've already established a relationship with Sheriff's Office and Judge Executive's Office, and with the blessing of the School Board, we're going to move forward, and we're going to bring some resources to Garrett County.
Questions?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next, on my goal's update, it's unique how things kind of align at times. I appreciate Ms. Milton talking about earlier legislators being here and things of that nature. One of my responsibilities is to make sure that we as a district stay connected to other entities, and I've given you a one-pager there just to kind of summarize a few of the things. Two days ago, Representative Mead was here, he visited all of our schools. You all remember that Representative Mead has done a lot of stuff for us over the last legislative session, and we're very appreciative of that, but I think he enjoyed himself immensely on Tuesday, getting a chance to see students living out what it really is to be here. He even got to speak to his daughter's class, not even meaning to, he just happened to be in the right place at the right time, so it was really fun for him to get to do that. He saw Dr. Douglas, he was principal for a day here last year, and he's seeking to be principal of the day at two of our schools this year, Paintlick and the high school, so we're working on having that happen. So anytime those legislators are here, that's important, because when they're in Frankford making decisions, we want them to be thinking about us and our students and what goes on with them. Also can never highlight enough the relationships that we have with our local law enforcement. I want to make sure I echo that tonight, because they will call us and ask for stuff, but we have the capability of calling them and asking for stuff, and not to highlight something that will sound negative, but last week, we had a group of people who went to bed not knowing that there was about to be a threat against our middle school. Now it wasn't a threat that was going to be carried out, but it was a legitimate threat about our school, and when those people went to bed and they didn't know what had happened, by the time they got up the next morning, our law enforcement had already pressed charges against the individual, and another capacity of law enforcement was to be on-site that morning to provide additional security. So maybe the safest day in the history of schools around here was last Thursday, because so much effort had been put in by our local law enforcement, both sides, that evening. And superintendents who aren't in this district probably cringe when they hear me talk about that, because they'd give anything to have the ability to have something like that occur. So we're just very, very blessed to have two agencies that work so closely with us and help make really positive things happen in those ways. So when we have those kinds of relationships, we just keep building on those to try to make them better and stronger, because it serves both groups really, really well. And I just wanted to make sure that we brought you all back up to speed on those kinds of things. I'll take just 30 seconds, and if I go over to that, you all can pull me back. It's really time, though, that we have a conversation with people about the ridiculousness of social media and the amount of time it takes away from our staff and from law enforcement. We've had to put out information twice, once last week, once this week, on potential threats that had nothing to do with us, but people locally took that information and turned it into something that we had to address, and we are doing a huge disservice to our students when we take the amount of time away from instruction, the amount of time from our law enforcement to do that. But the other thing that's happening is it creates a lot of fear for our students, and that's unfortunate, because our students deserve better than that, and so we need to start stepping up and saying to people who refuse to check things out before they promote that, that they are doing as much damage as the people who were making these threats by promoting that. So I would encourage anybody who has an opportunity to encourage people to be better stewards of something like social media to do so, so that I don't have to sit here and tell you about the great work that our law enforcement did to prevent something like that, that we can actually talk about what law enforcement does to support not only us but the rest of the community. So I'll get off my soapbox, and we'll move on.
You went over 30 seconds.
Yeah, you didn't stop me, so that's what happens.
Thank you.
Next will be our construction update.
Good evening. I think probably the biggest thing, if Dr. Stolf you can freeze it right there for a moment, the biggest thing that we get to report this month is in the last 30 days, we have actually been able to open up the football stadium, and we were able to have the first scheduled game, so congratulations to you all. I wanted to freeze it there to give you a real good shot of it, you can see the parking lots that are done, the football field that's done, all of the concrete work that's around it. There's some miscellaneous work to remain. We've started to prep on the track, we're not working on it today because of the night's soccer game, they'll start back on that tomorrow, they're going to be working part of the day through the weekend and early next week, to be able to get the track surface on and hopefully get that wrapped up. You can go ahead and start now, sir. I just wanted to get that freeze there so you can see that good shot of the football field. As the video goes through, you see that the infield of the softball field, all the brown there on the right, it's been completed, there's finishing of the rubber pellets that goes into that, but all of the turf is down. Same for the small field to the left, the brown and green is really a good pop there in color. Contractors back on-site this afternoon, they're going to start working on finishing the pitchers mound. The big activity for today was the base asphalt getting on the tennis courts, so we was able to get that in today. They will be back Saturday morning to put the surface coat of the asphalt on, so the tennis courts will be finished up with the surface coat of asphalt, and then we've got a two-week wait period before the athletic surface can go as of current down. You can go ahead and start on that. But a lot of the, all of the side concrete is done around the softball field, coming around the tennis court and moving, you can see it to the left there, coming across by the baseball field and tying into the baseball press box. The next activity that's going to happen in those areas will be in about two weeks, the grandstand contractor will be back on-site, they'll put the grandstands in front of the baseball press box, the softball press box, and the bleachers in front of the tennis court. So three to four more weeks by the time we have the next board meeting, there'll be another significant change, 1st of October, we're going to start back on finishing the irrigation in the baseball field, and then we'll start rolling out the sod turf in the outfield and the baseball fields and softball fields, it's our grandinosa. What we don't have on video is the, I want to focus mostly on this, is the area of the new road that's being built from the intersection there in our office trailer over to your bus truck. The majority of that is roughed in now, they've got most of the site work done, I was over there today. They lack probably a couple hundred feet from the end of that road tying into the other, so it's coming up. The weather's been good, it's all coming along nicely. Any questions?
What are we looking at, estimating completion?
We're targeting the end, about the end of next month. What we would like to do is be wrapping up by the end of next month. Now there may be some miscellaneous items, but our goal will be trying to have all the asphalt down and everything, rest of the curbs toward the bridge, the asphalt, and hopefully getting the new road asphalted, try and tile that in in the next six weeks, six, seven weeks, months. All right? Then we'll be done for Thanksgiving. Thank you all.
And finally from me is the link to personnel changes for 2024 September timeframe, that's there for your review. These are changes since our last August board meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Yep, go ahead.
Anything else? All right, item three is under reports, and item A is treasurer's report.
You all have had a chance to review that. Ms. Coffey is here, if you have any questions, she continues to keep you updated on that, and you obviously can reach out to her at any time. We'll have an additional treasurer's information in our action item a little bit later to put our working budget in place, and then we also have the bills as presented. I don't think I got those linked today, so I apologize, I'll get those in before tomorrow, but you all see them on a weekly basis already, this is just the summary, so we'll make sure that that gets posted so the community can see those if they need to.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item four is consent agenda. Unless any board member in going over this wants to pull out anything, consent agenda, I'll entertain the motion to adopt it as it is presented.
How much question do you have to make?
Mr. Smith made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Any questions or comments?
If I could, we have a lot of donations that come in to us, and all of those are appreciated. There's one particular one here, I think we just want to highlight, I'm sure the band is very honored to get a donation of $2,000 on behalf of the Grand Oakley Memorial. I know that's an important memory for them, and we just want to make sure we highlighted that specifically before we go into...
Well, thank you. Any other highlights or... All in favor, let me know, but lifted hand. All board members were in favor, the consent agenda is approved. Item five comes to action agenda, and item A is to approve pay applications for the high school student athletic fields and facilities.
So you have in front of you this month's pay application of $1,656,000, and our payments at Trace Creek, and those are all in line with what they should be, so it's my recommendation that you approve the pay applications for the GCHS project.
Thank you. Heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the pay application for the GCHS student athletic fields and facilities.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hart made the motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Ms. Davis seconded, any questions?
Ms. Davis seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor, which brings us to item B. It's a change order.
It is. Uh, part of, uh, the, the restroom facility was to simply be painted, uh, from the wall to the floor. We felt like it would be, uh, a much cleaner, a much nicer look if we put a code base around that. The cost to do that's one thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and thirty cents. So it'd be my recommendation if you approve this change order so that we can put that base around the restrooms at our new facility.
Thank you, sir. Heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move we, uh, approve change order for code base suggestions.
Okay. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve the working budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
As I mentioned to you a little bit earlier, uh, we were going to be, this is something that you do, uh, each September. Uh, the working budget has been worked on up to this point. It's ready to be approved by you as our start point. I will, uh, point out that there are several documents that are listed there. You also have a hard copy that you received, so that you can review that. So it's my recommendation that you approve this working budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the working budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you. Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Uh, working budget is approved. Item D is to approve creation of a pair educator for the HSP room at the middle school.
Simply because of numbers that they have, uh, that, uh, while we may have anticipated that they could be this area, we just weren't positive that they would be. Uh, it's a real challenge, uh, for the existing folks there. And in order to make sure that we provide the best services possible for our students that they use the HSP room, and also support our staff that is in there, I would recommend that you approve the creation of a pair educator position for the HSP room at GMS. This is a general fund pay, uh, and if we need to move that into another area next year, we'll work on that if we need to do so. But it will be clear that it is a general fund pay.
Thank you, sir, for making that clear. Uh, you heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pair educator position.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item D is approved. Item E is to approve Community Action Council Head Start Contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
We appreciate the Community Action Council. At the end of each year, they usually seem to have an additional amount of money that they can provide to us. This year was about fifty thousand dollars that they added that we were able to utilize, and we're appreciative of that. So since we continue this relationship with them, we need to make sure that we have approved that contract. So it's my recommendation that you approve the Community Action Council Head Start Contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the Community Action Council Head Start Contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb had made the second. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item E is approved. Item F is to approve purchase of an additional minivan for transportation.
Our, uh, uh, transportation needs continue to grow. Uh, the, the minivan becomes an opportunity for us to reduce the use of large vehicles for small trips. Uh, our Director of Transportation, Daniel Edgington, has worked aggressively to try to find, uh, a, a quality van. We found one for thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, it aligns with what we've purchased in the past, so it's my recommendation that you approve the purchase of an additional minivan for the Transportation Department.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of an additional minivan for transportation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item F is approved. Item T is to approve MTSS procedures manual.
So our MTSS group has created a manual to help us be, uh, consistent, uh, across the, 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 the year and across the work that we do. Uh, they revised it and just completed the revisions, uh, this month. So it's my recommendation that we approve the MTSS procedures manual. Uh, we, I would put twenty-four, twenty-five, but unless we need to revise it in the future, we can carry it forward. So I don't want to put a limit on it that way. So I'm just asking you to approve the procedures manual.
Thank you, sir. Heard the recommendation? Yes.
That's an acronym. Would you like to explain to the public what the MTSS?
So it's a multi-tiered system of supports. And, uh, in our link that we have there, if you see that in the upper right-hand corner, it's listed there, and it would also show up if somebody wanted to take a look. But thank you for asking that, Ms. Davis. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the MTSS procedures manual.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded. Any other questions? All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item G is approved. Item H is to approve attendance incentive plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So one of the things our MTSS group has been working on is, uh, attacking the challenge of chronic absenteeism, uh, across the state. That's become a, a, a huge challenge. And so one of the angles that they wanted to go at was an incentive plan. So they've created an incentive plan that will support students, uh, across the, 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 the year. If a student has perfect attendance, they become eligible for a variety of opportunities. Uh, there's some, uh, oh, some coupons that'll be available to everybody within their drawings that are available as well. So something happens on a monthly basis, then something on a semester basis. And the only thing that's requested is those people make a donation, and we highlight them when we have the opportunity. And that's obviously something that we're more than willing to do. So this is a great step forward. One of the things that I would point out that our group is talking about and thinking about and being supported by our DPP on is, uh, an absence is an absence. Uh, if it's an excused absence, we can't take that student to court, but that student still misses instruction. So we're having to be, uh, intentional in making sure our parents understand that just because it's an excused absence, that doesn't, uh, negate the effect that it has on a student. And so these incentives may be just the need for some students to show up, and that's what we need to focus on. So having said all of that, it'd be my recommendation that you approve the attendance, that's incentive plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
All right. Thank you. Heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the attendance incentive plan.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And before we, uh, before we vote, uh, the list of donors of businesses, if we approve this now, does the door still open for more?
I, I don't think we would ever say no. So yes.
Okay. I still bet you're.
Absolutely.
Because there might be other businesses once this thing.
You've got somebody pointing, two points at that one.
All right. Anybody here? All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. This incentive plan is adopted. Uh, item I is to approve a MOU with Mountain Comprehensive Care for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
With your all's indulgence here, I'm going to cover a couple of things, uh, so that you don't have to hear it over and over. One of the things that we wanted to do this year was, uh, well, we, first, let me say, we have an MOU that already exists with Kafka. They've become our, uh, mental health group of choice, and we're using them, and you approved an MOU with them. Uh, we still realize that there are other, uh, counselors who come into our building, and they are all connected to other agencies. And we recognize that if we're approving one group, we ought to approve all of the groups. So what we're doing tonight is a series of MOUs to kind of backtrack, to make sure that we have done what we need to do in order to be diligent about supporting our students. So I'm not going to repeat that with each one of these next four MOUs, because we're going to have a series of those. Uh, I'll just ask you to give me an opportunity to address each one of the groups, and then we'll ask you to approve those. So it's my recommendation that you approve an MOU with Mountain Comprehensive Care for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, sir. You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that MOU with Mountain Comprehensive.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item I is approved. Item J is to approve MOU with Central Kentucky Counseling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
It's my recommendation that you approve an MOU with Central Kentucky Counseling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, sir. Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Uh, item J is approved. Item K is to approve ML, MOU with Key Assets Behavioral Health Services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So in keeping with what we're doing, I would recommend an approval of an MOU with Key Assets Behavioral Health Services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the MOU with Key Assets Behavioral Health Services for twenty-five, twenty-five.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? Again, all board members were in favor. Item K is approved. Item L is to approve MOU with Quest Counseling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make a, or another recommendation, that you approve the MOU with Quest Counseling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you. Heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU with Quest.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item L is approved. Item M is to approve MOU with University of Cumberland for Option Nine.
This is different, and so I'll, I'll give an explanation here. Uh, as most of you know, there are lots of methods that are being utilized to try to increase the number of qualified teachers to be in schools. We have a number of teachers who've gone through Option Six. Option Seven's an available option. Option Nine is a newer option. It's really for paraprofessionals who are working in districts. We already have an MOU that exists between us and Eastern through our relationship with Central, uh, with CKEC. Uh, this will extend an opportunity to the University of Cumberland. It doesn't mean that we will necessarily have somebody who takes advantage of this, but it would give that option and make it possible for someone to be in that, uh, that, uh, line of, uh, of support. So it's, it would be my recommendation that we approve an MOU with the University of Cumberland for Option Nine.
Thank you. For the explanation, and you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the MOU with University of Cumberland for that Option Nine.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item M is approved. Item N is to approve facility guidelines for the new, uh, high school facilities.
So this was a, a, a late add after our meetings on Friday, so I just wanted to make sure that we touch on it. Uh, the high school has now had an opportunity to utilize the facilities, and there's some things they want to make sure that they put in, in front of the community. And we'll make sure that you, uh, support what they're doing here. So there are a number of things that they would like to make sure that people are aware of when they come to our events. The only pets that would be allowed would be those things that are truly licensed service animals. Uh, and as you read down through here, you'll see some of the things that you already understand by law. No smoking or vaping is to go on here. Uh, no outside food or drinks, respect of our property, which obviously is an important thing. We want supervision of children so that they're not just being dropped off and having nobody to take care of them. Uh, we ask the people to follow the staff instructions, demonstrate good sportsmanship, maintain a positive, uh, atmosphere, and adhere to any seating guidelines that we have. This has been a new, uh, experience, uh, to figure out how all of these things work. And over the course of time, they may want to alter these slightly, but based on their request to have something of this nature, it would be my recommendation that you approve these facility guidelines for the new GCHS facilities.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the facility guidelines for the new facilities.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? All board members were in favor. Item N is approved. Item O is to approve Garrett County Schools Hall of Fame Committee membership.
We're getting closer and closer to the first initial, uh, group to, who will be coming into the Hall of Fame. We all did a lot of work to get to this spot. So what we've attached here is the expectations of who would be on the committee. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these. The superintendent is, uh, an assigned member, as is senior student rep to the board. So we were sharing with Mr. Farrell the other day that he was going to be on this because of his, uh, position. Uh, Keel Lamb, who's our principal out at, uh, uh, Paint Lick, is going to be the principal rep. Daniel Hopkins would be the teacher rep. Betty Jane Montgomery would be our community rep via, uh, retired teachers, uh, in our community. So it would be my recommendation that you approve the Garrett County Schools Hall of Fame Committee membership.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second the motion by Ms. Davis. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lamb, are you up to the? Are you? All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? Thank you. All board members were in favor. Uh, and that is our last one now. I think we're ready to move into executive session.
So I'd like to.
If there's not anything else to add.
Right. So I'd like to make sure that the public knows and that the, the folks here know, executive session is about to take place. There can be no action coming out of it. So anybody staying around to wait to see what's going to happen, all they're going to do is come out and go home. Uh, so everybody should feel free to do that. I believe we're going to shut the broadcast down as well, since there can be no action being what happens.
There's no action. Thank you. Yes.
In something coming out of the executive session. It'd be my recommendation that you all approve, uh, moving to an executive session.
All right. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion? Go into executive session.
I move we go into executive session.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded. All in favor? Let me know, but lifted hand? Thank you very much. Thank you all that joined us through social media or YouTube or whatever. All of you too, for sticking through this. Thank you.